Call this meeting of the school committee to order, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an announcement. I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law.
It will not be today.
Okay. We have no one recording. Okay, then we will hear our mission statement, please.
The mission of the Falmouth Public Schools is to educate students so that they are engaged in their education in a way which develops their capacity to pursue their goals and fosters lifelong learning. The three core beliefs which define us as a school system and enable us to accomplish our missions are: Continuous improvement for students, teachers, staff and administrators. Enthusiasm for teaching and learning. Collaboration in teaching and learning. The role of the school committee is threefold: to write policy, to approve the operating budget, to hire the superintendent and support her in carrying out her initiatives for the district.
Okay, thank you. And another opening item on our agenda is the poll which has comments from students.
This is from Victor at T-Ticket and he says, "My teacher lets me improve my behavior by being nice and not yelling at me."
You might want to talk to last years.
This is from Lawrence, Carly. "My teacher encourages us to ask questions when we don't understand." And the high school one from Abby. "In my school, I am most interested in seeing my friends and going to sporting events."
Good reaction. Those are more than just reading right and working. Okay, now we will come to the public comment section. Please limit comments to two minutes for individual, two items not on the meeting, on this meeting agenda. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items on their advisement or the individual may request an item to be placed on a future agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll act on the first item on the agenda about a field trip to MIT. And Mr. Duke, I think is going to speak to us.
Thank you for having me. So I'll just give you guys a quick rundown of what happened with the science fair this year. So for the second time in a row, we had to postpone the science fair due to poor weather. So I've been doing this, I think, since 2007 and I guess was lucky all the way up through 2018. But then last year took a doozy and then this year took a doozy too. Think we made the right decision. I don't know if you guys remember the weather on Saturday morning. It was just a little too treacherous and we might have lost a couple of projects in the end. We actually were able to pick up a couple too, but I still think the fair went off pretty well. Largest contingent was Lawrence, so congratulations again, guys. It was a great turnout. We had high numbers in the high school, general offswing. I think a lot of that is credit to the Clipper Time program we have at the high school. And then the Falmouth STEM boosters, we're bringing in mentors on Friday. Our Friday Clipper Time session helped kids kind of get focused because a lot of the high school kids have a lot on their plates and just having that little extra time to help them manage their projects, I think was a nice touch and kept a lot of kids in the game. And then great projects across the board. Our two founders award projects, both went to team projects from T-Ticket Elementary. So congratulations to them. But all the K-6 projects, I thought were absolutely incredible. My son did his first project at kindergarten down in North Malmouth. And we were able and fortunate enough to recruit twice, because I had to recruit twice, what, 100 judges from the community? And we notoriously have very stringent judging here because, you know, we have such a rich scientific community. So our students here are able to see actual scientists and engineers at these early stages of the science fair, especially kids who are able to move on to the state fair, which I'm here to talk about. And so I'm very fortunate and very grateful for all the community members who volunteered. And also just the same, we were able to hand out thousands and thousands of dollars worth of awards, give or take ballpark, about least $15,000 worth of awards to students from, like I said, the class projects down at the K-6 schools, a project to a Lawrence student and then to our very talented high school students. So we sent kids to the regional fair. Admittedly, it was a little bit of a down year. It happens. We have big years and small years. None of our students earned entry directly into the state fair from the regional fair. It is what it is. I'm still very proud of them and the projects they brought to the regional fair, but we are allowed to send two projects to the regional fair. So for various reasons, we chose the two projects we did choose based on their scores at our fair and likewise if it was open in their schedule. So we're bringing Lawrence Tang, who is a junior, and Chavon Morris, who is actually our highest scoring project at our fair. She's a sophomore. And they're both eager to go to the state fair where they're going to be competing alongside projects. Public school projects, parochial, private schools from all over the state. Big prizes to be won. And just because they didn't win something regionals, I've had kids who go directly and end up winning pretty decent little projects too. It's a great experience and they're eager to go and I'm hoping to get permission from you guys to bring them.
Okay, is there a motion to accept this field trip?
I'll make a motion to accept the field trip request to MIT on May 5th and, excuse me, May 3rd and 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
That was an editorial comment on the side. Okay, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, now.
Thank you.
The next item is to act to support an overnight pilot learning opportunity for eighth, grade eight students to Cuddy Hook Island. I believe Sonya is going to talk on this topic.
I've also encouraged other members who are participating in the conversation to join us tonight. So Tom Bushey, who's our principal of Lawrence School, and Kristen Trabou, who's a grade eight science teacher and is the anticipated chaperone to join the students as well. We received through the Lawrence School office a request to put together a STEAM Academy learning opportunity for students. Initially looking at a small scale, which would be the group of students who are asking for permission tonight to go, to participate and to provide feedback on the learning experience with the hopeful intention of scaling it so that we would be looking at potentially an opportunity for all grade eight students over time. We're trying to understand some of the cost balances as well as the logistics and this is also a learning opportunity for us as a district. Michelle Carvallo, who serves as the sole teacher and principal of the Cuddy Hook School, has also disclosed to us that, you know, they're in a place where they have to redefine themselves in their educational mission because the final student on island who's eligible to attend is aging out this year. And so they're looking for ways to open up the doors of their school and look at their island as a one classroom, as an outside learning opportunity. The other reason why this is such a small scale is because Dr. Costa and her husband are opening their home, their private residence, and providing all of the food and the lodging for the students who would participate in this opportunity. They would, once we look to scale it up, if that's the direction we do in fact take, they have dorms that they would be able to use and so it would be a coed opportunity and be able to be accommodated that way. So that's one of the reasons why it's also limited to girls for the pilot. However, with some of the non-traditional bi-gender metrics that we've been looking at in the vocational realm, as well as some of the Commonwealth initiatives around STEM for girls, it is in alignment with some of the larger initiatives outside of our community as well to provide opportunities and exposures for students. So that's a brief overview on top of, sorry for the many materials we shared with you, but we wanted to share everything that came to us from Cuddy Hook and then also provide a little bit of the evolution of thought because we wanted to put selection criteria around the 10 students that are identified to go. So we are sampling from the LPS program, or ASLP program, from the collaborative that we have been using for decades? I think that's what it's called. To select students for that leadership opportunity as well in the STEM field. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, is there a motion to accept this overnight pilot learning opportunity field trip?
I'll make a motion to support the overnight pilot learning opportunity for grade eight students to Cuddy Hook Island.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, are there discussion or questions?
I have.
Go ahead, Cal.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
So I don't remember where we left off, but it's concerning, you know, private residence, whether or not homeowners need to be quarried, fingerprinted, whatever. But that aside, I think this is incredible. And if this doesn't pan out the way that we hope, I would hope we would look for other opportunities because I know Pennaceys is trying to launch the same kind of thing. So, you know, yes, of course it's great when the pilot goes really well, but if it doesn't, I don't think we should give up on this as a concept so that kids have something at Morse Pond and then they come here and they get to do something similar but different again.
The teacher and principal has already filed her query in anticipation of this moving forward because of logistics of getting off island. And Dr. Costa and her husband have been given notice that if you do in fact endorse the opportunity this evening, that that would be a step that they would have to take as well, just to cover our bases, to make sure that we have our safety of our students in the forefront.
I think Melissa had her hand up.
So, yes, a couple of comments and questions, if that's all right. Is the New Bedford ferry the name of the ferry out of Woods Hole?
No.
No, they have to go to New Bedford.
So to actually get on the ferry service, they would have to go to New Bedford. But one of the other options that we're looking at is a local charter, so someone like Jim Newman who would be able to potentially work with us to bring the students out. So we wanted to look at it from the lens of if that service isn't available, what would be the standing ferry and make sure that it matches our timetable, just so that that opportunity is there.
Okay.
So that's why we've sort of weighed out both options. But we didn't want to approach anyone and make any type of tentative commitment without knowing whether or not we had support to do that.
Okay. And then if I could just make a few comments to this. Similar to Kelly's in that I think that this is an amazing pilot program and how generous of the people from Cuddy Hook. And I, as proud as I am of the Seashore program, how wonderful to branch out to our gems right here, right? I mean, it's amazing. It's, I really hope that it pans out. I think that Cuddy Hook, you know, trying to relook at themselves and see what their options are moving forward, this is kind of a no-brainer, but with well-thought-out thoughts. So I wish everyone the best and I hope that it works.
Bill?
I think something that you mentioned earlier was feedback. And I think that's really important if we want to look into this and possibly expand it or look at other places. So when the students get back, I would, now, I realize it's the end of May, but when the students get back, it would be nice to have a few of those come in and give us an update, their experience, their exposures and what they learned.
Thank you for the invitation. And Kristen is also going to be, not to overuse the phrase, but also given an opportunity to co-teach. So it'll be evaluated and feedback will be provided both from the teacher perspective as well as the student perspective. And then one thing, I'm not sure if I captured this adequately in here, but the students are also going to be given time at the end of the day to utilize the school or the classroom resource to also do any work that would be part of their Lawrence School Day. So be able to keep on top of their studies. And then both Ms. Carvallo and Mr. Trabou would be able to support them in that opportunity as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I think I'm in agreement, like others, the programs that they suggested, the different courses that you could choose from sounded really interesting and just kind of the perfect thing for the age group. I guess my biggest concerns were with the, not just the quarrying of the people involved, but the private residence and the feeding of the students. I'm wondering, is there a certification for a private residence? Is there something that we need to have in place to make sure that it's safe for students to be there? The same thing, you know, anytime that you're, you know, doing different things where you're feeding, whether it's the public or it's our students, are they serve-safe, you know? I just, I don't know, those were some of these concerns that just jumped out at me to make sure that we're putting them into a situation because we're the ones doing that. It's not like they've just gone somewhere with their family, that's one thing. But because it's school sanctioned, I would want to make sure that we've got all those kind of details buttoned up.
And we can look at that and we agree that it's one of the reasons why we looked at Kristen and Toni because they had asked for another parent to chaperone. And so we took a step back and sort of reframed and then that conversation. So we can also...
And you mentioned that going forward that they would use dorms. So why wouldn't they use...
They're not open and prepared yet and they haven't brought in additional staff to keep those running. So they did start to share, like, they have a health form that they sent to us today and a copy of some of the other things and some sample menu items so we could get a sense of what would be made available.
And the other, there were some comments in there from other participants. So they run overnight programs or are we piloting it for us as Falmouth, whether we like it, or piloting the whole concept?
They've had a similar concept. I think they're looking to reimagine that in a more structured way. And I think the fact that they have a shared connection with Falmouth and Dr. Costa coming over, I think they just saw it as an opportunity that as they're looking to, I guess, innovate their program and grow that into a more sustainable opportunity now that the school really doesn't have any other dedicated purpose, they're just sort of seeing this as an opportunity to get feedback about those shifts. And Tom and Kristen, if you saw it differently or heard something different?
Yeah, my understanding is that our role is really to evaluate their curriculum. They've come up with a new program in terms of curriculum that they want feedback from the students on what worked for them, what didn't, what they understood, what they didn't. So we're really there just piloting the new curriculum.
Leah?
Does that help drive right into your question or no?
Yeah, I'm just sort of trying to balance that out, right? Kind of looking at it from, you know, the district's point of view and making sure that, you know, we're not going to have any kind of liability and that, you know, we're doing it for the best interest of, you know, our students as well, so.
Yeah, one of the parts that came up in our conversation was just how many students grow up, you know, in Falmouth or surrounding towns and have never had the opportunity to access the island or aren't even aware, you know, that the chain of islands exists or what each offers. So I think when we started to think about that from just a pure exposure point and then building that through the curricular conversation that we were sharing and Chris Brothers was part of that as well, it just kept compounding the idea of what we could do for student awareness. But I do hear what you're saying too, is the other side of that.
Leah?
I just think this is such a great opportunity. And I think that, you know, in thinking about civics and pieces, it's so interesting how this island works. So I think that there's so many opportunities to do many branches of our curriculum with them. So it's kind of a mutual, everyone's benefiting from it. I just, I was really excited reading about this. And for me personally, I just didn't know anything about Cuddy Hook. And I know, Kelly, you go there sometimes, right?
I've gone a couple times, Mike, and it goes all the time.
So...
It's such an amazing place to get to be. It's never been. I'm one of those kids that's never been. It's like being taken somewhere completely different.
But I, seeing as though I go to an island every day and a much bigger island, I just think that it's such a great experience for students to be a part of what it means to live on an island and how you have to sustain and self-sustain in so many ways. And how you run on islands like that and survive. So what a great experience. I do, I think that all of those liability pieces and logistics, I feel like you guys can do a good job with that and we can support you in policies or whatever needs to be done around that. I did want to just say that there's a page that has two different prices on it. And I heard that you didn't say that yet. Is that right? Okay, so...
No, so we worked through initially, I think what they had, I gave you everything that they had initially presented and then I tried to clarify places where, after our conversations, we had arrived at some finer details. So the maximum it could potentially cost to participate is $50, which would be if they take that ferry out of New Bedford. We're looking to work on having the students have boat access directly out of Woods Hole and then the bus to bring them from Lawrence to Woods Hole. And we're looking at applying for local grant funding to be able to offset both of those, in which case the opportunity would be free to the students who participate.
Okay. So just, there's this one page here that has $60 and then it has $50 on it.
Oh, it's the application, okay.
Yeah, just to, and it does look like it's a pretty lengthy application for students of having to get recommendations and an essay.
We took the ASLP process and sort of put them together. So if you are to endorse this, and we can make the cost correction, they are prepared, Chris and the team here at Lawrence are prepared to copy the application and make it available as early as tomorrow. And then we were hoping to give students part of the vacation time into next week. But again, if you don't support, like, we were preparing all of this to bring it to you for conversation. So if you don't support it, then, you know, we understand that position as well. But we just were afraid that if we didn't get it together, because the conference call with Cuddy Hook came about 10 days or so ago. And trying to respect the approval timeline of the school committee and recognize the timeline that they were permitting the opportunity, we were trying to work with both to try and put it together.
John?
At the risk of adding another moving part, for lack of a better way of phrasing it, to make a, take something that was potentially a negative and maybe make a positive out of it. In the event you're not able to go out of Woods Hole and you were going to New Bedford, perhaps we can incorporate a trip to the New Bedford Willing Museum as well. Maybe on the beginning part of that, because that might have a profound impact on the students to see that, you know, from that length of time in the past and then to be out, you know, isolated sort of on the island to kind of, really might be kind of beneficial. I don't know if it lines up with the amount of time that you have, but I just thought for the out there.
We can look, this is a new ferry scheduled for me, but it's even more restrictive than what we're used to. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, from the historical point of view, I'm, having read the ASLP applications and being aware of the process, I know that the teachers have input, they interview, they, you know, figure out if kids are mature enough to be away and help to anticipate overnight stays, things that could run into issues. So I imagine, you've done that before for ASLP, so it's much the same. So the teachers have that pre-screening thing, which is a big help. And the other historical thing, I lost while I was going over that. Oh, as far as putting people in, children in other families' houses, we send people to Europe and they stay in houses, you know? I mean, I know you're worried about the 10 kids all in one place, but, I mean, we do do things like that. So anyway, just a couple of historical comments.
You may be naked today.
Yes?
So since the teachers are already so used to this, there may be opportunity for kids. The ASLP is incredibly expensive and totally out of reach for a lot of families. And this is similar, but cheap. So it would be really great if we can tap some of that talent that ASLP is just out of reach for them.
There are scholarships though for ASLP.
But not if you're...
Anyway, but we, yeah, we have, we only have one minute more. I'm sorry to be really tight tonight, yes.
Can you just clarify what we're actually then voting to? Because it says to support. So we're just saying, we're supporting the idea to move forward or are we...
We'd like to just support our trip. Offer us your permission to be able to...
Do the overnight, it's an overnight.
Right.
Just, so with my, I guess with my questions about our liability, will that be looked into? Like, is there a support with, I mean, has that already been looked into or are we covered? I don't want to...
We had equated the residence part, at least in the conversation we were having around the planning to the exchange. And so that's why we initiated immediately that they all had to be quarried, very similar to the process that we engage in there. With more support, I would be willing to certainly look at any other guidelines or issues that we would have to understand and make sure enforced in order to ensure that we're doing our due diligence to support our students. But I do liken the process to what we've put together for our exchange programs.
And do those exchange programs have anything in place to make sure that house, you know, fire detectors or, you know, whatever, like, do, does that, is that, because when, exchange programs are, have been around for a long time and I figure there's behind these things to make sure that we are bringing kids into safe situations.
I'm more than happy to look into it. I know that, like, for example, when we were pursuing the international studies, there were house visits that had to happen once. So it's also a matter of us being able to go over and preview everything, you know, then that's incumbent upon me to make the arrangement and make that happen. So I will take the steps to look into what needs to be done and make those connections.
I'm just wondering about medical facility and if there's any need of medical help.
They said it somewhere.
Said there's a nurse.
Yes, there's a nurse available on the island. And then she also sent some additional forms that they were preparing on their end. One of them was a health form that they sent today to make sure that we capture information that we go to the nurse on the island. And then the other step is that, just as we do for any other field trip going out of the district, we would take the list of students to the school nurse here and also have the school nurse here screen for anything that we need to be attentive to and make sure that Kristen knows ahead of departure.
And this nurse's role is the, she's island nurse?
They rotate and...
They rotate? Okay.
And the mom of the couple hosting is also a physician at Falmouth Hospital. So they'll have an onsite doctor. She's a physician.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns?
Just a side note that I know that Mr. Cataldo is, Mr. Cataldo is well-known to Falmouth and also I've never been to Cuddy Hook and not seen him there, so they're very well-known over there. And I think, I think it's great that they're offering to do this because without them, I don't think we'd be able to do it. But personally, I think they're great people and are happy that they're doing this.
Okay, so I'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving this pilot program, Mr. Cuddy Hook, please say. Yes, we did a long time ago. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Okay, I know this is fun, great to say, but I'm being the tyrant here. Okay, now we have to look at declaring science texts at Lawrence School as surplus. Sonya, again.
So because of the transition in the science standards and the way that they were designed, that there's a spiral curriculum that goes three, four, five, and then again for another grade band of six, seven, eight, our materials were out of sync with the standards as well as more than 10 years past their original publication. So we have secured materials, and they also didn't include earth science, which is part of that spiraling sequence. So we've secured materials and introduced them to grades seven and eight this year. However, we did not get rid of the old materials. We also tried to see if there are ways that we could use them and have found that there are not. So we are asking to declare them surplus. And we are also, in the event that you declared the surplus, have been looking for someone who's willing to accept the donation of the materials, which we had a challenge after our literacy program transition. So we tried to be proactive in starting the calls now in the event that this or other materials come up.
Okay, is there a motion to declare the science texts at Lawrence School a surplus?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions or discussion?
Did you have any success in securing somebody who'd like...
Our volume is higher than what most want to receive at this point. And I don't know, it's because so many people have gone through this process with the standards switching over. So we've had a couple of people say that they've had to look into, you know, warehouse space or current needs and then call us back. But um, we've had a few people tell us, no, unfortunately, we're not accepting.
Would Cuddy Hunk like some textbooks? Could bring a few over there.
One? We could bring some sample materials. Um, you know, that's something that we could talk to Michelle about.
Just as you're going over there, if we have some...
Resource material for other...
I, I assume it's hard for them to get materials over there, so.
Yeah.
We could buy an extra seat on the boat and put the books on it. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, um, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of declaring textbooks as surplus, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Next item will be to act on three five hundred dollar donations and one eight hundred forty-six from the Falmouth Road Race. So Lori?
Uh, yes, so we, um, boys hockey, um, uh, girls golf and the athletic training. Um, five hundred dollars to each uh, of those programs. And then um, the eight hundred and forty-six um, dollars to pay for the plaques and pictures um, of the students who win the ACL championships. And that would be the girls basketball and the girls um, hockey. And copies of the checks are in your packet.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept this domni, these donations?
I'll make a motion to accept the three donations from Falmouth Road Race. Four, well, excuse me, four donations, three of five hundred, one of eight forty-six.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Andrea?
Um, I guess I was wondering that um, with the five hundred dollar donations, do all sports get these? And if not, how were those sports chosen?
Um, we do not know that, since this is the first time it's come forward um, this year. So I don't know if it's as needed, um, or, I don't know if anyone else has any information on that.
I think they can pick whatever they want.
They want?
But I think for us to, I think they can pick whatever they want, but they're cognizant of, I would imagine, cognizant of the fact that they have to balance it across gender.
And which they did in this case.
Which they did.
Title last one.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, all those in favor are accepting these four donations, do you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, um, the next item is to act on the donation of the scoreboard for the new off-purpose field. Last time it came to us, there was a question about the picture, so Lori has a new picture.
So it was a rendering before and you wanted a picture of the actual scoreboard. This um, scoreboard that you have a picture of is the actual scoreboard um, on the um, field at the high school. And so this would be, uh, and, uh, so they did apologize. They actually uh, attached and sent me the wrong one last time that had the new balance on it. Um, didn't realize that they had sent uh, an old um, picture. So this, this picture is um, of the actual um, scoreboard that they would be purchasing and donating for the new field.
Okay, is there a motion to accept this scoreboard donation by the Falmouth Road Race?
I'll make a motion to accept the scoreboard.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there, are there any questions or discussion?
I have a discussion point, and, and just as disclosure, I spoke to Jennifer Edwards about this from the road race. Um, just as far, and she said it was fine for me to share the, the discussion. Um, the, I, I found it interesting to learn that actually this initial, when, when it was sent to the road race, it was actually our folks like, involved with Kathleen Murphy and their group that sent it. So I think um, uh, some of the nuances of the scoreboard that we might see as far as size or font and things of that nature, I think we were kind of always looking at it as if it was them submitting it to us and them saying as, uh, you know, and, and us, you know, okaying it. Whereas it was actually kind of the, the, the schools giving it to them and them saying, okay, that's fine. So they might not have been as vested in certain things that we might have thought they were vested in and as like being a big deal one way or the other. And in looking at this, when I saw this actually at the field itself, uh, I actually thought the, the font being bold-faced versus the other one stands out a little too much. And I know we were looking at the policy of what the size was going to be and whatnot. Um, regardless of the size, I think just in general, uh, that the font should A, be the same font just visually as the rest of the fonts on, on the sign. And B, it shouldn't be bold. I think it stands out a little too much. I know we've got the two, uh, the two road race things. I actually didn't have a problem if they had new balance on there. It turns out that they're happy and they want it to have as it reads of just the, the Falmouth Road Race Inc., and that's how they do want it. But in the event somebody did have their corporate name being, you know, it's like that, I wouldn't have, not have had an issue with that if that is their corporate name, but they're fine with doing that. Um, so my uh, amendment I would suggest to the motion would be to have it stay exactly the same, except that the font would match the uh, the uh, above fonts, no bigger than where the regular Falmouth is, um, and have it not be bold. And I would actually, ideally, the donated by Falmouth Road Race, especially because for balance sake, they have the two logos on either side. Ideally, I would think that would, should be like seventy-five percent of the size of the font of like the Team Falmouth. As opposed to right now, it's bigger than the Team Falmouth and it's actually bolder than the Team Falmouth. So that's my, my amendment suggestion is to make the font size smaller and to have it be, uh, and have it be um, uh, not bold.
Okay, so since we're going to discuss the font and size, I think we have to have a...
We have to make a motion.
Make a motion to amend the original motion, is there a...
So that's his motion, so it would just have to be a second if any.
And just to make it clearer, because I, you know, so my motion is to uh, make it non-bold and to make it seventy-five percent of the size of Falmouth Conti.
Okay, is there a second?
And this, and matching the same font.
Is there a second for this amendment? I'll, I'll second it, so we can have discussion then, nobody wants to second it. Okay, so, does anybody have anything to discuss?
I just, if I can make a comment, just for the record, Jennifer said she would have no problem me sharing that the font being non-bolded, uh, she would have no problem with it being non-bolded, that's just...
Okay, Andrea?
Um, I mean, I didn't necessarily think we were going to be getting into that kind of level of detail, but I, I do agree that keeping one font style always is a nicer design and makes things cleaner. So if we were to go to that, I'd be very happy with that, that's...
Leah?
So I, I guess, I feel like we're, we're kind of micromanaging this piece of it. Um, but I'm just wondering how this design came about? And John, what you were saying is that this was designed by...
This was us, this was like Kathleen Murphy going to them, hey, what do you think?
Yeah, so...
And I always assumed it was them saying, this is what we want.
Yeah.
So I think that changes it.
So I want to make sure we're supporting what Falmouth Public Schools wants on this and not coming up with some other design that doesn't align with what people have put forward.
Okay, my, oh, other people want to talk on it, yes, I'll wait, yes.
I would like to see the same consistency that's there, that, that is there now, uh, based at the soccer field and the cross field. And I think when uh, the Falmouth Road Race has stepped up so many times, multiple times, and this is going to cost uh, the district nothing and their donation of about thirty-six thousand dollars, I think what is there is appropriate, and I think we should support the Falmouth Road Race as much as possible.
I don't know who had their hand next to Melissa.
So um, I asked for this a year, two years ago, specifically when the Falmouth Road Race was kind enough to give us money for, I believe, a um, workout facility at Morse Pond. And some folks were concerned that the Road Race was looking to plaster their name all over the place and um, make the Falmouth Public Schools, like the, the name Falmouth smaller than the Falmouth Road Race. I, again, would like to say that I am very grateful to the Road Race. I appreciate everything that they do, not just for this town, but for our students and the schools. Um, as somebody who's currently taking the lead, taking the reins over for another special race in town, I can appreciate the change of um, font. Because when you have it all the same, you don't always see it. I understand what you're saying, possibly have the Falmouth be in bold and maybe the Road Race be in the font that the Falmouth and guest and period player penalty are currently. Um, but I like the different fonts. And I certainly don't ever want to seem ungrateful to the Road Race. And again, I circle back to, I think it was a year or two ago that I asked the policy committee, which I'm on, um, that we needed to get a handle on setting policy for signs. Because here we are again, spending more time on signage.
It was here too.
It was in this building, it was right here, I was sitting right there. So I, um, circling back, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Road Race.
Kel?
Um, I think we're micromanaging this, aside from the fact that this sign is very deceptive because objects in the front are closer than they appear, or whatever the heck the saying is, I don't know. But there's no way it's actually that big, the sign is just tipped, because you're taking it from here. So I would just push this back and let y'all defer to your best judgment. I don't think that we should vote on amendment that changes fine points. I think that's your job, find points.
And I'm going to say, when I looked at this sign, the first thing I saw was the F and Falmouth Clippers. That was the very first thing, it's in the middle, it's the biggest. So all the other fonts just like fade into blinnium with that F and Clippers, that's my point on it. So unless there's anything new, I think we need to...
Vote amendment.
Vote on this, okay?
Amendment.
Okay, on the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any, uh, are all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so the amendment does not pass. Now, the original motion is to accept the donation of the scoreboard as is in this new picture? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, all right, next we have routine business. So um, we need to approve the minutes, two sets of minutes, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
I, I make a motion to accept both settlements from the March twelfth and March twenty-sixth.
I, I second.
Okay, the discussion would be on March twelfth. Karen, I was absent too, so I'll keep it, okay?
No.
All right, so with that edit, um, all those in favor accepting these two sets of minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, Lori?
Yes, can I just make a comment about that? Um, is it possible to get draft the way it is on the first one for all of them? Instead of the um, that red way that the draft is, just because you don't see it on the second page? It'd be nice to have the, is that water, just a watermark?
I'm just for the...
That's, I, that's, okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, I, uh, I guess a long-stating tradition with the superintendents uh, is to go around and visit the schools and let um, staff sign up uh, to have one-on-one discussions. And so I thought it was a great idea when it was brought up to me. And so I've visited um, three schools so far, um, the other four are scheduled. Uh, and I've um, enjoyed tremendously talking one-on-one uh, with the staff. And I've got some um, great insight on some of the um, programs within the classrooms and some suggestions. Uh, but mostly, um, people just wanted to, to say how happy they are of being in the jobs. So that was very nice. Um, I've also had the opportunity to meet with Sandy Cooney, um, for, uh, she runs the um, uh, sorry, the after-prom uh, party, so we talked about that. But in your packet, and, and that sounds wonderful for the students, I've heard actually many times since I've been here, um, that, uh, the after-prom um, party at the rec center, and how great that is, that gives the students an opportunity. But um, there is a pre-prom um, opportunity for our students um, up to sixth grade from four to six in the afternoon. And so I actually think that's great that the um, younger kids can go and kind of get to see um, what it's going to be like when they get there, but they're going to actually have some fun on the, um, so we're uh, sending the flyers home, so they can take advantage of that. And um, so, um, we, I had another Cape and Island superintendent meeting um, on April fifth. And did that, and then a very exciting new opportunity um, for Earth Day as all third graders will be going to um, on a field trip to the Sea Crest Hotel. So thanks to um, Mr. Fenari for that. Uh, we, Sonia and I met um, with the chef that's going to be doing a lesson around um, sustainability. And that should prove very exciting. And then we also have um, a delightful person from the um, Falmouth Marine and Environmental Services um, that will also be uh, there, and she is going to do a lot around shellfish. So um, just, uh, they'll be doing uh, understanding the different ones, measurements and math, it'll be some activities. Uh, but they're also going to be able to watch um, uh, oysters, a tank, you know, with water and how oysters actually filter water. So over the three hours that they're going to be there, they'll see a tank become completely clean um, with the oyster process. So there'll be other, some other activities and all, but those were a couple of them. So we're very excited, and um, as always, when I, you know, um, uh, Mr. Fenari was very nice when he asked for a group of students. And I said, well, if one group, then, you know, we're going to take third graders, every third grader. And so they were very gracious to open up, so we'll have, you know, like, two hundred and fifty students. I want all students to be able to have the same kind of experience, so thank you for that.
We're happy about it.
I think they need a chaperone to go...
Yeah, absolutely, we do. You can drive a shot, Sonia, and I won't be there.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's so much fun, those things, to watch the business. Yeah, I'd like to go, is that all right, Mr. Fenari?
So, thank you.
Okay.
You start the train, it sounds great.
It's amazing.
I just wanted to say the, about the after-prom, I hear so many wonderful things about it. In fact, I, the comment I hear most frequently is how they enjoy that more than the prom itself. Which leads to the question, you know, about the expense of going through the whole prom part of it, when this type of um, experience with their friends, how great that is, that, that is really seems to be the highlight, so.
I'm looking forward to go to see what that looks like.
The human Velcro suits where you run up and throw something at the wall, it is a lot...
All kind of fun.
I just wanted to ask Lori on the one-on-one, is that, do the staff sign up to talk with you?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so we're just scheduling like two-hour blocks and they can sign up. And um, if there's been more, I just keep saying, they keep signing underneath, and that's okay too. Yeah, so anyone that wants to could do it. They came in a group today, a whole grade level came in together, because they didn't want to, uh, move themselves.
Sonia, do you have a report too?
Yes, so I shared um, my report this time as a written report, just to try and help capture, we've been working on the tech for learning initiative and trying to share out some of the work we're doing and helping to bring more people into our conversation, so.
Just wanted to share, thank you.
Are there any questions for Sonia? Again, I apologize for my hurt mannerism tonight, I just am watching town minute, town meeting clock over there.
It's done, it's good.
The only thing I would say is, um, I forgot to do this last time, I just reminded people to update their queries. It's phenomenally easy, you can just walk into the administration building and the front desk calls up. Fill out a form, calls up and it's, it's really seamless. So just to remind everybody to make sure your queries are updated. Are, are there any questions for follow-up information? Yes?
There's been um, just some concern regarding the lights in front of the schools for the crosswalks, so I just kind of want to bring that up again. I think East Falmouth, North Falmouth, East Falmouth, North Falmouth, yeah. Just, there's been a buzz about it, so just to kind of, and I know it's kind of out of your hands a little bit.
Well, the good news is they did, they're starting the projects with, with vendors.
So it's, is it an outside company that fixes those? Okay, so it's not just as simple as...
They're being replaced.
Okay.
All of them?
Not all of them, but four of them, four sets to be replaced.
Will we have parts to replace them when they are replaced?
If the DPW...
For those that were replacements to begin with?
If the DPW has chosen the right vendor, I think that we will.
Is there any chance that the school committee perhaps has a say in who the DPW is hiring for a safety measure in front of the schools?
No, unless you have some great ideas by getting...
I don't, I'm just annoyed that my kids do not have a decent, you know, lights in front of their elementary school since kindergarten.
I'm just annoyed that my kids do not have a decent, you know, lights in front of their elementary school since kindergarten.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, um, there's a, are there any subcommittee reports?
Moving right along with policy.
Yeah.
Moving right along with negotiations.
Yeah, and the policy truly is so dedicated that we, we're doing two weeks in a row, which is, is good to catch up on it. Yes, yes.
I am happy to announce that I received everyone's evaluation of Dr. Dora. And, um, I will be working with the evaluation team tomorrow to calibrate or to get a compiled evaluation for Lori. And we will meet in, um, on the twenty-third at noon to go over that, so we are in good shape.
That's Natalie and Kelly are on the committee too, so.
Tomorrow morning.
Thank you for all that tedious counting of things that are... Okay, all right, are there any other items that I may have missed? Okay, so...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Too bad.